Welcome, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started with the agenda in the meeting tonight. If everybody could stand and I'll do the prayer, then the pledge of allegiance of the flag.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, for this is the day that you have made, and we have rejoiced in it all day long. Lord, we thank you for those that are assembled here tonight at our council meeting. We thank you for each and every one of our council members. We ask that you continue to lead, guide, and direct us in every decision that we make. And, Lord, we pray for every family that's assembled here tonight. Can you bless them? May you bless them, grow them in prosperity. And we thank you for all of our blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started on the agenda. We've had the agenda before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Counsel?
Mr. Council President, I'd like to make a motion to move public comments for anyone here for the, you know, to speak on behalf of the DEI resolution repeal. I'd like to make a motion that anyone who'd like to speak before, speak on that, be able to do so before our vote tonight.
Okay.
There's a lot of folks who, obviously, I know are here who would like to speak on that behalf. And I'd like to make sure everyone gets the opportunity to speak their voice beforehand.
Okay. All right, so I've got a motion on the floor. Is there a second? All right, I'll second it. Okay, all right. Madam Secretary, I've got a motion second. Can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Nay.
Ms. Milky?
Nay.
Ms. Hay?
Nay.
Okay. Okay, let's move on. So let's do the dispersments from March 4th to March 11th. Counsel's had a chance to take a look at it. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to that?
No.
Okay, is there a motion? Okay, got a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Excuse me, aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, all right. Next on the agenda, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read the presentation? Proclamation?
Proclamation, Endometriosis Awareness Month, March 2025. Whereas endometriosis is a disease affecting at least one in 10 women of reproductive age, whereby the endometrium, a type of tissue that normally grows in the uterus, also grows outside the uterus. And whereas many of the estimated 200 million women worldwide who have endometriosis live with debilitating chronic pain and fatigue, on average experiencing a delay of up to 10 years between the first symptoms and diagnosis, with between 30 to 50% experiencing infertility. And whereas, although endometriosis can affect every organ of the body, even the eyes and brain, at the present time, the disease can only be definitively diagnosed via a laparoscopic surgical procedure. And healthcare providers must focus on managing the symptoms of the disease with various treatments. And whereas, the first worldwide endometriosis march took place in 2014, with events held in more than 40 countries. And by 2018, 63 countries around the world were participating in the annual event which has been sponsored by the American Medical Association, the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, the American Society for Reproductive Medicine, the Society of Laparoscopy Surgeons, the International Federation of Gynecology and Obstetrics, and the European Society of Human Reproduction and Embryology. And whereas, there is a need for further research and increased funding for research of endometriosis, which would hopefully lead to an earlier, to earlier detection, discovery of the cause of the disease, a reliable, less invasive, and less costly way to diagnose the disease, more effective ways to manage symptoms, and a cure. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Endometriosis Awareness Month in Talbot County, and urge all citizens to help increase awareness of endometriosis and the importance of diagnosing this disease, which to date has no known cure. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 11th day of March in the year of our Lord 2025.
Okay, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for having me back.
Thank you for coming.
So first, I just want to say thank you. For the past five years, you, the county, has supported Endo Warriors of the Eastern Shore and Endometriosis Awareness. And I am very grateful for that, and so are all of the women and their families in this county. My name is Shannon Hanawald. I am an ambassador for the Endometriosis Association, and I am also the founder of Endo Warriors of the Eastern Shore. I got this disease when I was 15. It started with horrible menstrual cramps. The first five years, the doctors told my parents that I was lying because I wanted to get out of school. There's no way to diagnose endometriosis except by laparoscopic surgery. So when I was 17, I attempted to take my own life because I was at the point where I felt like I had no other choice. There were no other options. Nobody was listening to me. And that was where I was stuck at. After that, I finally found a doctor who did the surgery and diagnosed me with stage four endometriosis. I miraculously had my first son. Then I've had 19 surgeries since then. We had to go through IVF, and we lost a baby before we had my son, who is now seven years old. I am extremely grateful that I am able to have them. But because endometriosis takes on average 10 years to receive a diagnosis, there are many women that are not able to have children because by the time they are diagnosed, the endometriosis has taken over their entire reproductive system. The endometriosis doesn't just go away when you have a hysterectomy. It still grows on other organs. It's been found in the lungs and the brain. It grows on your intestines and the colon. It has many autoimmune disorders associated with it, one of them being Crohn's. And I bring that up only because I was diagnosed with that. I spent 14 months in the hospital, every single month, for about four or five days because the insurance company didn't want to pay for the treatment for the Crohn's. So I had doctors in the emergency room that took me back to that 16-year-old girl that was in a really dark place because they told me the endometriosis was not painful, that it was not an emergency, and they did not know why I was there. The difference was, I was not that 16-year-old girl anymore, and I let them have it. So it is extremely important to me because I have many nieces by blood and by love, and it is my job to protect them and make sure that they never feel the way that I felt that night when I felt like I didn't have any option but to take my own life. Endometriosis can affect girls as young as eight years old. It causes severe pain. It is a mental, emotional, and physical disease. And it affects not just us, but the people that love and care about us. So it is important that we keep to, keep bringing awareness to this disease. And I greatly appreciate you guys supporting that and showing the women in Talbot County that they are not alone.
Well, thanks a lot. I appreciate it. Counsel?
Well, each year you come in. Certainly appreciate you coming in. I too was diagnosed last year and had the surgery. But not only did I have that, I had adenomyosis along with it. So certainly knows your struggles and your pain. So keep doing what you're doing. In any way, I can help you support your efforts. Please let me know. Thank you so much.
It's so commendable that you had a personal tragedy, and you turned that into something positive, which was to sponsor a cause, to deal with the issue. And that's, that's just the right thing to do, and I commend you for doing that.
Thank you so much.
I'll just echo the thanks for, for your work in raising this awareness and happy to provide this opportunity, to provide you that platform to get the word out.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Shannon, as, as you mentioned, you're here every year. And I'm sure it's not easy to bring up, you know, all that you do every year, right? So thank you for doing it. Thank you for bringing awareness to it. I sent you my picture last year?
Yes.
15th?
Yeah, it was actually this past Friday. But I haven't made the album yet. So if you send it, take your pictures and send it to me, and I'll put it in the album.
Consider it done?
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to say the same thing, is you're brave being here. And we really commend you being here, making the awareness. And the council's behind you, that's for sure. And we really, really appreciate you coming in here every year, telling us about that awareness and keeping young ladies aware of this kind of stuff. So thank you. Appreciate it. We have something for you. Come on up.
We, first, we have to, oh, you need a motion?
Yep. I got, I got worked up there about that, you know?
We already knew the vote.
Exactly, exactly. So, okay. Is there a motion?
We got a motion and a second, all right.
Okay, okay. Got a motion, second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Now, now you come.
Okay.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll let these guys go. One, two, three. All right. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Secretary, next presentation. Kelly Tims, Coming Home.
Mr. President, members of the council, first of all, I would like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk. My name is Kelly Tims. I am the commander of the VFW Post 5118 in Easton. And with me is Wayne Hall, who is the president of the Vietnam Veterans Chapter 648 here in Easton. We're here to talk about a welcome home parade that we're giving to our Vietnam community. Vietnam veterans, when they return from Vietnam, never received a welcome home like our younger military members do. So we're taking this as an opportunity to, 50 years later, to reach out and celebrate. It's really not a celebration, but it's a celebration that we're thanking our Vietnam veterans. I'm just going to read a couple of things here. The Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of 2017 designate March 29th as National Vietnam Veterans Day. We chose the next day, the 30th, the Sunday. The United States of America Vietnam War Commemorative Honors all veterans who served on active duty in the United States Armed Forces anytime from November 1st, 1955, to May 15th, 1975, regardless of their duty assignment location. And I'd like to stress a little bit, even members of the military now don't give the Vietnam era veterans the recognition that they deserve because they were, they were told where to go, how to do it, and that's what they did. Many of them probably volunteered for Vietnam and didn't even get that opportunity to go. But they were stateside. They may have been in Germany or Japan, but Japan, but they were helping the members that were actually in the war itself. So we are here to celebrate the thing, this celebration. And the parade will be March 30th. It's going to start at 1:00. It's actually going to be a small ceremony out here in front of the courthouse by the memorial. Wayne will give a short talk, relay a brief, and from there, the parade will start. The parade will run from Dover Street, up Washington Street, Lee Road, directly to the VFW. It's only approximately a half a mile. We've had a great, great response for, we were wondering how many units were going to be in the parade. Every day, I get a call, somebody volunteering. And the only thing we're asking, if you come, want to be in the parade, that it's military-related, especially Vietnam. But if you're military-related, please come out. Another major concern we have is, how do we reach out to our Vietnam veterans? And this is a platform, I think, we'll reach out. So please, everybody here, reach out to your Vietnam veterans, Vietnam era veterans, family members. We're also going to honor family members. We have Gold Star members that will be riding in convertibles in the parade. I'm sure you're aware because we can look at the memorial out front. We have Gold Star parents here in Talbot County. So that's pretty much it. Like I say, we're just inviting the community out. We're hoping that we have thousands of people on the street. After the parade, we're asking everybody to come to the VFW. We're going to have ceremonies there. We're going to do a roundtable event is where we honor the POW missing action soldiers. If you haven't seen it, it's worthwhile. It takes about 17 minutes. And then we're going to have a commemorative 50-year pinning at 3:00 and another at 5:00. And this is for Vietnam era veterans who were never recognized. They will receive a pin, and we do a proclamation, and we give it to them. This will be the last one because this year it will end. So we encourage everybody after the parade, please come to the VFW. We're going to have food. It's just going to be a great time to honor our veterans. Again, thank you for allowing us to sit here in front of this.
Yep, thank you. Thank you. Counsel?
Kelly, as always, appreciate all you do, right? We'll be there.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I look forward to being there as well. And, you know, they say it's never too late to say thank you. And that pertains to our vets, although for some, I have a scout leader, who is an Army veteran from that era, and he's no longer with us. We should have done this long ago, but I'm grateful that this is getting organized now.
Thank you for the commemoration. I was married to a Vietnam vet, and unfortunately, we've lost him, principally because of PTSD. And he's sorely missed, so I'm so glad to see this celebration. I only wish that he'd been here to see it himself because he would have finally learned that he was appreciated for what he did. Thank you.
So we certainly thank our veterans for their service. We thank you for putting this together, and I look forward to the celebration, as my colleagues have stated.
I hope to see you all there.
Yeah.
We'll be there.
We're cordially invited.
Yep, exactly. And we really, like I say, you bring a lot to our attention all the time, Kelly. And you're in the trenches with us all the time. And I can't thank you enough. And we're blessed to have somebody like you in, in your service and, and all the Vietnam vets that are around here, because there's a lot of them. And we really appreciate you guys, you know? And this would give you a little bit of a pat on the back, and I'm glad to see that. So really appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next on the presentation is Delmarva Community Transit. Madam Secretary?
Well, they're doing the presentation first.
Okay, good. Yep. How are you?
I'm sorry, I don't think Keith and Henry Wade were to make it tonight, but I'm here.
Okay, so they literally threw you under the bus, right? That's okay. You'll do a great job. How are you? How are you?
Great. How are you this evening?
Good, good. So you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Andrea Waters, and I am the Transportation Grant Specialist for Delmarva Community Transit.
Okay.
So in this year's grant, I'm going to give you the executive summary of this year's annual transportation plan for FY26.
Okay.
This plan covers transportation for Talbot, Kent, and Caroline County. And in the operating section of the grant, we are asking for funding for 5311, which is public transportation. The federal and state portion that we're requesting is $925,820. The local share is shared by Talbot, Kent, and Caroline County, and that is $308,607, for a total of $1,234,427. Under the SDA portion of the operating grant, we, that provides transportation for seniors and persons with disabilities. The state portion is $421,768. And the local share is shared by Talbot, Kent, and Caroline Counties, is at $140,589, for a total of $562,357. Under the Americans with Disabilities Act, the state portion is $40,000. The local portion is Talbot County only, and that is $4,444, for a total of $44,444. Capital this year, we're asking for preventative maintenance costs to help with keeping the buses in good running order. The federal and state portion of that is $25,500. The local share is $4,500, shared by the three counties, for a total of $30,000. And we're asking for propane conversion kits for the buses, for seven of them. The federal and state portion of that is $65,450. The local portion, shared by the three counties, is $11,550. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from council?
I may be one of the few in the room who has, who has used the system, particularly the St. Michael Shuttle, and have an appreciation for, this is a rural area, and public transportation is tough, and the schedules are sparse. And really appreciate what, what you provide for us. And I know that, that we put in some local county funds to, to ensure that there are more services here. Really appreciate all that DCT does for this community.
We use that money for the Talbot Mobility On Demand, where people can just call in during a certain portion of the day and just get picked up at their house and go where they want to go.
Which is so valuable.
And it supplements what we're doing here. That's very needed service.
Any other questions from council? No?
No. I thought Henry was coming in, though, and I was going to thank him because he helped my college student this summer. He had to ride public transportation. So we had to get the schedule, and he experienced that. So certainly helped him a lot.
We're moving over to a new software system, and today was the go-live day. So it was a lot more than one, and sorry.
That's all right. Just tell them that I appreciate his help.
Okay, you're welcome. I will pass that on.
Okay, that's good. So. Yep, yeah, we do need a vote.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Second, okay, motion to approve the FY26 Annual Transportation Plan. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay? Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you coming tonight. Okay, Madam Secretary, next on the list is, is a motion to take the administrative resolution off the table. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second, to take the administrative resolution off the table. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay? Aye.
Okay. All right. Now, if you could go ahead and read the resolution, please?
The entire thing?
Title?
Yeah, title. Yep.
Actually, can we read the whole thing?
Yeah.
So everyone knows what we're, what we're fighting on here?
Yep. If you could read the whole thing, that'd be great.
Administrative Resolution Repealing Administrative Resolutions of June 23rd, 2020 and July 24th, 2020, Regarding Diversity Training and Development of a Talbot County Diversity Statement, respectively. Whereas on June 23rd, 2020, the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland, the County Council, adopted an administrative resolution requiring that the county manager produce a report for the county council within 30 days on diversity training for Talbot County, Maryland, the county. Employees identifying future training opportunities and establishing an annual reporting requirement on diversity training and opportunities for county employees, the June 23rd administrative resolution. And whereas, on July 14th, 2020, the County Council adopted an administrative resolution requiring the development of a county diversity statement, the inclusion of such a statement in the county employee handbook, and requiring a written acknowledgement from each county employee in board, commission, and committee member that they have received, read, and understand the statement, the July 14th administrative resolution. And whereas, on January 20th, 2025, the President of the United States issued an executive order that in part directed the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, assisted by the United States Attorney General and the Director of the Office of Personnel Management, to coordinate the termination of, quote, "diversity, equity, and inclusion," end quote, and quote, "diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility," end quote, mandates, policies, programs, preferences, and activities in the federal government. And whereas, the County Council is desirous of repealing the June 23rd and July 14th administrative resolutions for consistency with the President's January 20th, 2025 executive order. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland, that the June 23rd and July 14th administrative resolutions are hereby repealed in their entirety and are of no further force and effect. In accordance with paragraph one above, effective immediately, the county manager shall not be required to submit an annual report to the county council on diversity training initiatives and new opportunities for such trainings. In accordance with paragraph one above, effective immediately, the county's diversity, equity, and inclusion statement adopted pursuant to the July 14th administrative resolution by motion of the county council on September 22nd, 2020, is hereby repealed and of no further force and effect. The same shall be removed from the county employee handbook and the county website as soon as practicable. Be it further resolved that this administrative resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption, introduced by the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland at a regular meeting on February 25th, 2025, at which meeting copies were distributed to the public for inspection. Adopted by the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland at a regular meeting on March 11th, 2025, at which meeting copies were available to the public for inspection. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 11th day of March in the year of our Lord 2025.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, so I guess at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for discussion, so.
No discussion.
No discussion.
Counsel, counsel. Okay. Do you want to say anything?
I've got some comments. I'd love to, love to, love to read here.
Sure.
So forgive me again, everyone. I want to go ahead and read some comments I've put together here. So I'd like to begin by thanking everyone for coming out for this topic both today and two weeks ago. Again, this is the First Amendment at work. My remarks today will be rooted in clarity. In fact, as it is clear to me, that from public comments last week- In fact, as it is clear to me, that from public comments last week, there are many out there that do not understand what this resolution is and that it is not. First, this is not a matter that extends beyond Talbot County employment. Many have tried to make this about themselves, other topics such as race, gender identity, accessibility, and have even gone as far as try and distort God, distort religion, distort our constitution, and even distort basic math. Since our last meeting, I've heard more... I've heard from even more Talbot County employees, and zero employees have expressed the desire in keeping these resolutions. Instead, they have devised they are all in favor of repealing these resolutions.
Objection.
Another fact, the U.S. Constitution, specifically in the Fourteenth Amendment, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Maryland Constitution, and the Talbot County Charter, as they stand, apply to protect everyone in Talbot County. If this council would like to reaffirm their support of the current laws that I just mentioned, that as a county, we will protect all individuals' civil rights, then let's do that. This vote today does not gain support from the council or community, then any vote to keep these two administrative resolutions in place proves four things. One, this is a political stunt. Two, that you are not interested in your citizens' true civil rights and protections. Three, it proves that you place more value in the two resolutions than existing civil rights and protections. And four, that you simply choose to go against the oath of office you took when you took this office. Fact, big clap. Fact, the ramifications of having a DEI statement in place have already started to affect Talbot County. Everyone on this council has received an email from our sheriff stating that the $40,000 grant currently underway for policing in the town of Trap was not contained in the list of grants unaffected by President Trump's executive order. This guidance was received directly from the state of Maryland. In that same email, the sheriff speaks to the violent crimes that have happened in Trap over the last few years, including homicide, abduction, car thefts, and car burglaries. Any vote to keep these two administrative resolutions in place simply proves that playing politics is more important than the safety of our citizens of Trap. Fact, the two administrative resolutions specifically called for a diversity statement. How equity and inclusion were added to the end product, I don't know, but it proves that these resolutions were brought in under political pretenses without regard for true and real unity. Wording in the ultimate DEI employee statement actually includes this language: equitable treatment does not necessarily mean treating everyone the same. They should be thrown out on their own merit. One final thought, I mentioned two weeks ago that this is fiscal responsibility in fighting for you. That still remains unchanged today. A vote to keep these two administrative resolutions only takes the federal tax dollars that Talbot County citizens have already paid into and will continue to pay into, and assures their use in other counties across the country where DEI policies are not in place. A yes vote to repeal these two resolutions guarantees that Talbot County citizens' federal tax dollars stay in Talbot County and benefit all, and I repeat, all of our citizens. Counsel, the choice is yours. Thank you all for your time. Mr. President, back to you.
I'd like to respond.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot to unpack there. So...
Please, please.
We really were not going to go there tonight with... because all five of us have agreed to sit here and tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. And in some of those statements, the truth was not told, and we are physically responsible, yes, and we are protected under the Civil Rights Act, but this statement has nothing to do with that at all when it talks about diversity. It is not doing any harm to the employees, and I personally have not heard from one employee in Talbot County government that has said that they wanted to remove and repeal this statement. And if we're going to say that, then they need to email all five of us, just like many of you did, with whatever opinion you may have, and I respect each and every one of you that responded, and I hope I emailed back to every one of you saying at least thank you, no matter what side you were on. But what we are not going to do as this council is stand here and accept the lies that are pushed down from the federal government to our local community. We are not going to stand still. And let me tell you, here as a minister, we can play under the... you know, we can play under God, but God sees all things, and I am not going to allow it sitting here. I'm not. I am not. We are not going to do this. We are not going to do this. Pete, go ahead and say whatever you want to unpack, but we're not doing this.
Stop the lies.
We're not doing it. We're not doing it.
Excuse me.
Honesty is the best policy, and the truth shall set you free, is what the Word of God says.
I simply want to address the idea that retaining these statements, the statement in the employee handbook and the annual report on training could somehow disqualify us for federal grants. If you look at the executive order concerning this, it does not deprive federal funds for our airport modernization, for rural development, or for policing. And if you take, for example, the... so those funds are not imperiled. Not only that, but if you look at the... grant to the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office actually has its own employee handbook, not the county's employee handbook. They don't use this one with this statement. The sheriff's office also does not participate in the county training, so that particular grant is applied for by the sheriff's office and not by the civilian side of county government. These funds, but the airport funds, the rural development funds also, at least as the White House has currently worded, the existing executive statements does not imperil these local grants.
So you're saying our sheriff is lying?
I am not saying the sheriff is lying.
Well, if you look up that grant, which I did, it has no reference to DEI. There is no federal grant that you apply for that you have to say whether or not you have a DEI policy. As a nonprofit, I have applied for several grants. It is based on equal opportunity, and it's based on discrimination. Those are the only things in the grant application. It does not mention anything about DEI or any reference to DEI, none whatsoever. I'm not saying the state, or I'm not saying anything wrong. I'm just stating what the application says as it relates to when you make application to apply for it. That's what I'm saying, you know? And we have a statement, and diversity is important, and we all should go through diversity training, because there are biases in a lot of us that we don't even recognize. And I recognize that I sometimes have bias, and in fact, to push it further, not just the employees, but council members should go through diversity training as well. We all should. Because there is bias. I mean, there's bias on this council. I've received it, so, I mean, we should go through diversity training. That's a fact.
It's hard to look in a mirror sometimes. You should ask when you're ugly and hurt.
Well, the same grant number, you know, the same... where we apply through these grants, it applies through the same county grant number. So Pete, your point is moot. I don't know what to say. I feel like I've said enough.
We all do.
Hey, first of all, let's respect this council's opinion, okay? Please, because we've respected yours, okay? So, no, just please.
This is a weird way to show it.
What?
Getting charged with what is diversity, equity, and inclusion.
In which the administration calls for diversity.
Point of order, point of order.
If you want someone to disrespect, that's disrespect.
Restore order. It's not...
Public comments at the end.
Point of order.
Hey, that's it. That's it.
Point of order.
Port of order. Port of order. That's it. Okay? I apologize, okay? Nobody bust out, okay? We're trying to talk as a council, and that's what we're elected to do. We're here to listen to you guys, and we have listened to you guys.
For the record, we tried that, but three council members didn't want those to speak in the audience.
No, we had public comments in the same order at our last meeting, and we did not move anything to the front. All of these people that were here at our last meeting stayed until our official public comments at the end so that we could hear them. We specifically tabled it so that we could hear public comments, and so we are keeping with the same order that we had at our last meeting to have the public comments in the end where they should be. They still get to speak, and we still get to hear them, because I want to hear them as well. However, we didn't move it. We didn't move it last time, and we didn't move it this time.
Fair enough. Three, two, three, two votes. Fair enough, okay.
Yeah, so they hopefully will stay.
Lynn, do you need to say anything?
Well, I think I'm on record a couple of times on my view.
Yeah, sure.
And I think that the main flaw with this administrative resolution is that it's not a proper interpretation of the executive order that was executed, nor the executive order's intent to revoke a previous executive order. And so it really doesn't apply to our two resolutions that Mr. Step wants to rescind.
The ones that you're on record for saying they're just policies. Okay. Got it?
Well, I want to make sure we're crystal clear. It's a statement. Okay? So, I just want to say a few comments, because I hadn't said a whole lot, okay? I was one of the ones that were here to actually put this on here, and everybody knows that at this stage. And I've listened to a lot of people. I've made a lot of phone calls. And first of all, I want to really, really thank staff, because it's really stressed out staff a little bit, and this is one of these subjects that are... mean a lot to everybody, and they really do. So, staff, and I really, really appreciate you helping. I've talked to Donna, I've talked to Clay, I've talked to Patrick, and, you know, I really appreciate the effort that you've made trying to help us make a decision, okay? And at least if anything, talk through it, okay? Because it is very, very important to everybody. It really is, and it means a lot. And I'm not going to sit up here half the night talking about the do's and don'ts. Unfortunately, I've seen enough in the last month that it hasn't got me to the point where, you know, where I need to be with a lot of people. You know, when you really... and I've read a lot of stuff on this, to tell you the truth, and really, one thing... and I told Keisha, and me and Keisha have talked a lot about this, we have, and we're on the opposite sides of this. That's what's good about democracy. Sometimes you can agree to disagree, and we rarely... me and her rarely disagree, and, you know, we've got Pete and we've got Lynn, and that's what it's all about. This council's not going to agree to everything. But there's one thing I did read, and I read it very closely, and everybody's read it, that in... the President Lyndon Johnson signed this EEO in July 2, 1964. And they did a lot of work making that and creating that, and that changes a lot of things, okay, for the best, and it really did. And I look at that as the blueprint and the foundation for everything. And I'm a little up in the air of dumping something on top of that, and that's kind of where I stand a little bit. I think things are all in place where they need to be, and I really appreciate you guys being out here, listening to me, and coming in here, and we gave you an opportunity last meeting to vent and say what you want. And I really do appreciate you guys being out here, and I do respect you guys, because that's your opinion, and that's what it's all about. And we've got to be civil on things. So at this time, let's go ahead and vote. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Nay.
Ms. Milkie?
Nay.
Ms. Haye?
Nay.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Madam Secretary, introduction to administrative resolution.
A resolution authorizing Talbot County to file an application with the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation.
Excuse me, Madam Secretary. Let's let everybody...
Okay.
Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Madam Secretary. Sorry about that.
A resolution authorizing Talbot County to file an application with the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation for a Section 503, 5303, 5304, 5307, 5309, 5310, and 5311 grant under the Federal Transit Act. Whereas, the Maryland Transit Administration is a designated recipient in Maryland for grants under the Federal Transit Act, and whereas, the administrator of the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation is authorized to make grants to counties and to local governments for a mass transportation program or projects. And whereas, the contract for financial assistance will impose certain obligations upon the applicant, including provision by the contract of the local share of the project costs in the program, and whereas, it is required by the United States Department of Transportation in accordance with the provisions of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, that in connection with the filing of an application for assistance under the Federal Transit Act, the applicant given assurance that it will comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the United States Department of Transportation requirements that are under. And whereas, it is the goal of the applicant that minority business enterprise be utilized to the fullest extent possible in connection with this project, and that definite procedures shall be established and administered to ensure that minority business shall have the maximum construction contracts, supplies, equipment contracts, or consultant and other services. Now therefore, be it resolved by Talbot County, Maryland, the filing of the aforementioned application be endorsed, and be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation. Now therefore, the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland hereby endorses this resolution, thereby indicating approval thereof, given under the hands of great seal of Talbot County this 11th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2025.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Good job. Mr. Thomas, you want to add anything to this?
I don't have anything further to add.
Okay, okay, so I guess at this time, for introduction, raise a hand.
Introduced by counsel.
Uh huh. Okay. Okay, Madam Secretary, you want to do the next one?
Well, you need to... you can vote on those.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second. Can you make a motion?
Okay, we got a motion second.
I thought Dave made a motion.
Yep. He did. Yeah, he did. Yeah, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay. The next is an introduction of a number resolution.
A resolution to approve execution of a lease of certain real property at the Eastern Airport consisting of 9,424 square feet, more or less, to Trigas and Oil Company, Inc., for a term of 10 years, with the right to renew for up to two additional five-year terms with rent of $1,119.49 per year, subject to an annual escalation of 2% per year over the rent for the preceding year.
Okay.
Counsel, good evening. Micah Richer, the airport manager, to know if you had any questions about this one. This one is basically a continuation of a lease that we've had with a longtime tenant, Trigas and Oil. We've had a very good relationship. They've actually expanded their area slightly and have a slightly larger propane operation. So this is just setting up another long-term deal with them, with an option of two additional five-year terms after that. So this is essentially a 20-year deal. It's good for the airport. It's good for the community, because they relocated that large propane tank that was at home in Brooklyn. It's good for the community because they relocated that large propane tank that was at home in Brooklyn out there.
Right.
And it's good for the airport because it provides, you know, more financial stability as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any discussion?
Just for a note, introduce.
It's introduced, yep, that's, but it was just, if you needed questions on what's been said.
Just reading, reading the, the, the lease, it appears that all that we are leasing here is the dirt. Yes, that's correct, Mr. Lesher. It's just a land lease. That's right.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Okay, so raise a hand to introduce this?
Introduced by council.
Uh huh.
The public, the public hearing will be scheduled for Tuesday, April 8th.
Okay. In the number?
At 5:30.
In the number?
It's Resolution Number 370.
370, okay.
Thanks, Micah.
Okay, great. Okay. Go ahead and do the next one, Madam Secretary.
Res- Resolution Number 371, well, if introduced. A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at 5536 Public Landing Road, rural Oak, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 46, Parcel 46, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Talbot County, Maryland.
Okay. Any questions on this, counsel? Okay, raise a hand to introduce?
Introduced by council.
This will be known as Resolution Number 371, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, April 8th, at 5:30 p.m.
Okay. All right, the next one?
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping two parcels of real property located at 23452 Pine Point Road, Bosman, Maryland, and Pine Point Road, Bosman, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 31, Parcel 352, Lot 2, and Tax Map 31, Parcel 351, Lot 3, respectively, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Christopher F. Daniels and Devon Williams Daniels, trustees under the C. and D. Daniels Trust dated May 30th, 2024.
Okay, counsel. Any discussion on this resolution? Okay.
I recall when we had a comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment the last time around, there was one down on Bellevue Road where there was a developed parcel and an undeveloped parcel. And it looks like we've got another on that same model here. We've got a developed parcel and we've got an adjacent undeveloped parcel. And as I recall, that, the way it went down last time is that the developed parcel, with possibly failing septic, or at least a questionable one, was granted the sewer extension, and the undeveloped one was ultimately removed from that resolution. The requester, I hope, is aware of that, that change.
We, I don't know, but we'll make sure that they are aware of that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, raise a hand to introduce?
Introduced. Introduced by Stepp and Callahan and Haight.
Uh huh.
This will be known as Resolution Number 372, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 8th, at 5:30 p.m.
Okay, great.
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping a portion of certain real property located at 24500 Rolls Range Road, St. Michaels, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 23, Parcel 41, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Rolls Range Partners, LLC.
Okay. Any questions or discussion, counsel? Okay.
Mr. Clark, this is a funny one.
Yes, it is.
Because it is a property that has two different classifications running down the middle of it. Is part of the property now served, or is it simply eligible to be served?
It's eligible to be served at this point in time. And right now, where they are looking at trying to expand the sewer service area would be, include, I guess, two structures and the house, if I'm not mistaken. So this is really to expand the sewer service area to include those two, those other components that would be served.
And those current units are being served by, or all of this is now being served by septic?
At this point in time, the, they were outside the sewer service area, so they would have to be, go through that process for a septic system. However, the applicants, because they've already received a portion of their parcel being served with sewer, they're looking to expand that to encompass the additional part of the property. So it's really an expansion of that sewer service area.
But it's, it's not now a failing septic?
I'm not aware that, I believe one of what's being requested is actually a house, a new house, that would be built on the property. And I think there's two, two structures that would be added to the inn that are on the property today.
Thank you.
Okay.
And so, once we introduce, though, Planning Commission has to look at it as well?
That is correct.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
In public works, yep.
You know, we had to prove it.
So a new house, you said, right, on that particular structure?
It would be a new house, yes. There would also be a new house.
Just one?
Just one, yes.
There's also some, just to avoid any confusion, there's also two existing structures on the property. I believe that's the two additional houses that are being discussed. Those are internal renovations, and those have received special exception approval from the Board of Appeals, and will be soon coming in for a site plan approval for that project.
Okay, any other? Okay, all right, raise a hand, introduce?
Introduced by Callahan and Stepp.
This will be known as Resolution Number 373, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 8th.
Okay.
At 5:30 p.m.
Got you, okay. Next, Madam Secretary?
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at 8288 Bosman Nevet Road, St. Michaels, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 31, Parcel 333, Lot 2, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Thomas Sullivan.
Okay. Pete?
This one is an existing house on 4.6 acres.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Raise a hand?
Introduced by council.
The public hearing will be on Tuesday, April 8th, at 5:30 p.m. This will be known as Resolution 374.
Okay.
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at 26396 St. Michaels Road, Eastern, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 33, Parcel 30, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by 2500 St. Michaels Holdings, LLC.
This is for an existing house, yes, sir.
This, this has, this one has one existing house on 50 acres. So is this one eligible for subdivision after it receives this classification?
So, Councilman Lesher, I looked at the revision plat that the state had had on record for this, before this meeting, and it was unclear based on the state's ESTAT assignment of that 50 acres and what was shown on that plat to be, whether it was true that that was 50 acres still or if the state doesn't have the 50 acres correct in the tax assessment for the property. And so I think at the most, at this time, I'd have to look into it. Most likely, you'd still be at one dwelling per 20 acres, so at 50, you'd be at two. So potentially, you're looking at one additional development right on this site. However, I believe when I was looking at the plat, that there were no additional development rights assigned to this parcel. And so it's, it's a little confusing with the 50 acres because I think they decreased it and gave some to the parcel that's on the right. But unfortunately, at this time, it's just a little unclear.
So can you repeat again, one dwelling per?
20 acres. Most of the parcel, about 99% of the parcel, are just about, is in the RC District. The rest is in the WRC District.
Thank you.
Okay, any other? And everybody knows about where it's at. It's just before the bridge on the right-hand side, St. Michaels Bridge. Just, just before that.
On the right.
On the right, yep. Okay. All right, raise a hand?
Introduced by Callahan and Stepp and Haight.
Uh huh.
This will be known as Resolution Number 375, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, April 8th, at 5:30 p.m.
Okay.
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at 7952 Church Neck Road, St. Michaels, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 32, Parcel 154, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Edmund Fleetwood Dunston and Augusta Harrison Dunston.
Okay. Any questions on this?
No questions.
Kind of the same thing. Yep. Okay, raise a hand?
Introduced by council.
And the public, this will be known as Resolution Number 376, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 8th, at 5:30 p.m.
Okay.
A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at 3965 Ocean Gateway, Trap, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 55, Parcel 51, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by the town of Trap.
Okay. Pete?
I, I got to talk about this last time.
Okay, good.
Nothing further.
Proud of you. Anything else? Okay, raise a hand?
Introduced by Callahan, Stepp, and Haight.
This will be known as Resolution Number 377. The public hearing will be on Tuesday, August, April 8th, at 5:30 p.m.
Okay, good. All right, Madam Secretary, good job on that. Thank you, guys. Okay, next on the agenda is introduction of legislation.
A bill to appeal, repeal official zoning map 32 of Talbot County and reenact the same with amendments to the zoning classifications of Tax Map 32, Parcel 36, consisting of 3.737 acres, more or less, from town residential, TR, to general commercial, GC, and of a portion of Tax Map 32, Parcel 91, consisting of 4.6603 acres, more or less, from TR to GC.
Okay, Mr. Stepp?
Is this the Shanahan property in the inn?
Yep, yep, and this is a bill. Yep. So, any questions on this or anything? Okay, so I guess we should raise a hand for this?
Just to introduce it, right?
Oh, yeah.
Introduce it.
Yeah, introduce, yeah.
Introduced by Callahan, Stepp, and Haight.
This will be known as Bill Number 1584, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, April 8th, at 5:30 p.m.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, good, good job, Madam Secretary. So, okay, I guess what we'll do is update on the airport. The man in charge is coming in here. He's flying in.
Keep this moving before he goes.
Yep, okay.
There we go. Once the mouse wakes up. Good afternoon again, evening again, counsel. Micah Risher, your airport manager. Thank you. It's always a pleasure to come in and give you an update. And if anybody hasn't paid attention, we have a little something going on out there. So I'll talk through it just a little bit. First of all, a little bit of a recap. Construction Package 1 is what was completed last year. If you see my, the picture of me standing there, that's in the exact same spot out there on the airfield, just a few months apart. So that really gives you the, a good visual of just the amount of fill that was brought in. Nearly 500,000 cubic yards of earth was moved last year to prepare the southwest end of runway four for our relocation. And you can see there in that bottom picture, that was nearing the end. They had started putting topsoil down. You really can appreciate how much fill was brought in. But it was one of the largest projects that, you know, was ever done on the eastern shore of Maryland. And just kind of give everybody a visual, how much is 471,765 cubic yards? Well, if it was spread across a football field, one foot deep, we would need 221 football fields. So that's kind of another, a visual of just how much, you know, earth was moved last year. And we were certainly aware that we were making some dust. There was dust in the area. We are very sensitive to that. And we know at, at times, it was, you know, getting on people's cars and businesses and things of that nature. So we were, you know, thank you for everybody for bearing with us and pardoning our dust as we were moving through the project. But that, that project is done, so we are prepared to move on to Package 2, which if anybody's been by the old Black and Decker anytime since last Wednesday, it looks noticeably different. We picked up the demo permit from the town of Eastern last Wednesday at 10 o'clock, and by 11 o'clock, they had already, you know, torn about 100 foot into the building. So we are well underway. It no longer looks like it doesn't in that picture there. Reynolds Escavating is our prime contractor. You know, the big thing here, and I'll go into the details here in a slide, but we did a lot of environmental testing, a lot of environmental mitigation to get to this point. So one thing that we want to reassure the public is all the due diligence was done. There was a small amount of lead paint that was properly mitigated, asbestos tile, all the freon removed from the HVAC units, but everything was properly mitigated, legally mitigated, and there's nothing hazardous or toxic left in that building. And we actually have our environmental management plan for the public to download if they wish. It's on the website. So it's all right there, very transparent. But that's the big thing that we want to reassure people, is there's nothing hazardous or toxic in that building as the demo begins.
So, so, Micah, can I just kind of build on that for a second? Because I have had a lot of people ask me, because it's an old building, and it has asbestos in it. It did.
It did.
It did.
It no longer does.
Yep, so that can clean all that up. We really appreciate you being on that because that was, that was a concern of a lot of people.
It was a, and it was a justifiable concern.
Yep, absolutely.
I'm a lifelong resident myself. I was concerned. We were all concerned.
Yep.
One thing that I always say is, you know, I'm born here, raised here, from here, just like you guys. So I care deeply about the airport and the community, and we were not going to do anything to put anybody in jeopardy.
Yep.
So, yeah, when you see the, you know, the little bit of dust that is being created, that's, that's just from the block and the dirt. There is nothing hazardous in that building. And we actually have three air quality monitoring systems triangulating the building. And our engineers are checking that data. It literally is piping the air monitoring results to their phone in real time. We are paying a project manager to be on site every day during that, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Anything, yeah, we are, we are, you know, we're actually taking it way above what is required. And the whole project has been like that. So, you know, we are exceeding MDE requirements to ensure everything there is safe to the public. So we want everybody to rest assured. And if you ever have any questions, please, you know, give me a call and we'll, you know, we'll get them answered immediately.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And then, you know, it's very important to know how we're paying for it. And so I always wanted to tell you, obviously, this is funded through our, the AIP program. This program, Package 2, is fully funded. We have these monies. It's a $5.6 million project, about 5.1 of actual construction, 423,000 in project management, and nearly 18,000 in some administrative cost. But we have those grants executed. There they are. There's the numbers. They are fully executed. And the airport share is 303,000. And this is always a good time to remind everybody that these grants are paid for by the Aviation Trust Fund, which are, the revenue is from users of the system. When you fly, you pay a little bit on your, on your ticket fees, excise taxes on fuel, things of that nature. So essentially, users of the system fund capital improvements of the system. And then our share here locally for the airport, the airport is a self-sustaining enterprise fund of Talbot County Government, and we have been for over 30 years, so we pay our own way. So no, no negative impact to any taxpayers with the, with the program. And again, details about our environmental management, if anybody does have any questions. This environmental management plan that you see here is online, easternairport.com. You can download it and read through it. Several phases of testing were complete. When we purchased the property in 2017, we entered it into the MDE's voluntary cleanup program. We made commitments to clean up the space. voluntary cleanup program, we made commitments to clean up the space, you know, the entire fifty eight acre parcel, uh, soil and the building, uh, they issued a, uh, N, N F R D in two thousand and nineteen, it's been approved to the state, nothing hazardous, uh, noth, nothing toxic, it's all been removed, and I'll end by saying, the entire building is being reclaimed, recycled, reused to the extent possible, so the, uh, aluminum and steel are being recycled by the contractor, the block, the, uh, brick, the cement pad and the asphalt are going to be crushed on site and used as subbase for the new airfield. The new runway will be nearly thirty six inches in depth, so we'll use that material out on the airfield, so, basically, the only thing that's going to the landfill is vinyl roof and some, you know, insulation, there's really not a lot of waste that's, you know, it's going to be reused, so, but that's the big thing, the environmental concerns, we just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that there's nothing hazardous, nothing toxic, and the building should be completely demolished by the end of March, the contractor's telling us, you know, only four weeks to get it down to the ground, um, and then, we certainly have a lot more site work to do to get below ground or below grade, we have to grade the entire fifty eight acre parcel, there's a stream relocation that's going to happen, um, the wetlands, if you see there's some debris, woody debris and stuff stacked there now, that's going to create a new wetland area, and, and again, this is really going to improve the, uh, stormwater, the pollution controls, and really, it's going to be a site beautification, because once that building is gone, it's going to be a green space that's nicely landscaped, uh, with a little bit of lighting there by the end of next year. So, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any discussion or questions or anything?
No, great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for updating us.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, and I, I, I just want to comment on that, too, you, you've done a great job, and, and back to the nightmare of the dust, you know, you, that, that contractor put, you know, two, three trucks on the road at all times with that dust, so, you know, I, I really, really want to thank the contractor and thank you for, because, you know, because I'm right beside it, and it was, it was all the, all those businesses right around there, it was tough on everybody.
We were working hard, and
You were.
That's really what I want everybody to know, that sometimes there is a little bit of dust, a little bit of noise, but just, just know that we're doing everything we can to, uh, to protect the community
You have.
and to lessen the impacts to the extent that's possible.
Yeah, well, good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Next is the, um, Madam Secretary would be the discussion on the General Assembly legislation.
Mr. Counsel President, I'll go ahead and speak to this if you don't mind.
No, no problem, Mr. Stamp.
So, under this, uh, item on your agenda, discussion of General Assembly legislation, uh, the only item that we have is regarding the State of Maryland's Budget Reconciliation and Finance Act, uh, known as B U R F A, that's Senate Bill Three Twenty One, House Bill Three Fifty Two, uh, legislature is currently considering this, uh, B U R F A, which will shift, uh, cost onto county governments, uh, which I, I think that you probably would not like to have done, so, what you have in your packet of letter, um, expressing your displeasure to the state, state legislature, that if you're so inclined, you might want to take a vote and approve the sending of that letter.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I certainly, I certainly support sending this letter, uh, we've heard a lot from, uh, we, we get briefed by the Maryland Association of Counties, we have, we have really, uh, we have a really great instrument with the Maryland Association of Counties in lobbying, uh, in, in representing county needs at the state level, and, uh, they've identified these costs, they've helped to quantify what these costs would be, and we've seen costs, uh, to Talbot County, uh, amounting to more than a million dollars per year, uh, from this. We are actually far from the, the worst affected county, our Dorchester County immediately to our south, which has a smaller budget, is going to be affected to the tune of more than three million. The, these, these costs being pushed down, uh, to the counties as a way of relieving the state budget is simply a, a, a poor, uh, and, and, and inappropriate strategy for resolving the, the state budget, the very real state budget crisis, um, and so I'd like to see this. I guess my one question on this, uh, is, in the interest of time, do we send it as is? We also heard from our Director of Parks and Recreation, uh, Emily Gimble, about, uh, how this same piece of legislation would affect, uh, Program Open Space Funding, which we use for, uh, park improvements, uh, is it possible to fit that in there, uh, without delaying this? If, if this is on a time schedule, just do it as, as is, and the other one that we saw was, uh, the, the cuts to, uh, um, the area associate, uh, Area Agency for Agents, Aging, which includes our, our one is Upper Shore Aging, which runs our senior centers, and they too would be, uh, pretty severely impacted by these cutbacks. If it's possible to add these other things, terrific, if not, let's send the letter as drafted.
Okay.
I agree, I second it, um, I serve as a liaison to, uh, Mako, and Lynn is, um, the backup, so, we see these bills firsthand that are flying from the state, um, and a lot of them, you know, sometimes do have a fiscal impact that will affect Talbot County and our taxpayers, and, and for that, um, I second, uh, the motion to send the letter as is.
Okay. We've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel, we'll get that signed and get it off, thank you.
Okay.
We'll move on to the county manager report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Counsel President, under the county manager's report this evening, I have several recommendations to you for consideration for board and committee appointments. The first one is involving the Agriculture Land Preservation Advisory Board, we're requesting, uh, the appointment of Mr. Keith Shortle and Mr. Gary Gannon to that board.
Motion to approve the appointment.
Second. Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Thank you, the next would be the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, this is a new committee, and we're asking consideration for the appointment of the following, Heather Grant, representing Easton, Bob Bergner, representing Oxford, Phil Starkey, representing Queen Anne, Ava Ellett, uh, representing Trap, Bob DeGore, representing Easton, Citizen Representative, Jessica Lister, Cordova, unincorporated area of Chapel District, Frank Corallo, Saint Michael's area, unincorporated area of Saint Michael's District, Howard Callahan Senior, Cordova Business Owner, Ed Hykes, Saint Michael's area, Maryland Farm Bureau, Carl Mike Owens, School Safety Specialist for the Talbot County Public Schools, Lieutenant J R Dobson from the Talbot County Sheriff's Office, and Mr. Pete Les, Lesher, as the council liaison to the board.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll do a second. Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
The next would be the Economic Development Commission, the Town of Oxford is requesting the appointment of Barbara Ranson, Ox, Oxford Vintage and Trade, to serve as their representative on the Economic Development Commission.
Motion to approve the appointment.
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
And finally, under Boards and Commissions, the Upper Shore Aging Incorporated Board of Directors, we're requesting the appointment of Jenna Markey to serve as the Talbot County Representative on that board.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, um, at this point, I would like to see if we have a representative from Waterfowl Festival? Great. Uh, the, the, as you read your agenda packet, the Waterfowl Festival Incorporated is requesting a letter of support for their grant application to Maryland Historical Trust in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to replace or repair a roof, no county funds are required, and our representatives will explain to you any further detail and answer any questions.
Absolutely. So, I'm Sammy Mooney, I'm the Assistant Director at Waterfowl Festival, um, we've been trying to improve the building, it's a step-by-step process, right now, it's the roof, the barrel roof construction, um, and the flat roof on either side that we're looking to replace.
Okay. Any questions?
No, the building looks great, I mean, what's been done so far, um, I've been in there several times for events, and, um, you guys are doing a great job over there.
Yeah, we, we have some big plans, so we're excited.
So, motion to approve, unless there's any other?
Second, second, uh, I, I realize how long it's been getting to this stage, and, uh, congratulations for, uh, at least, uh, the eligibility to, uh, to apply for this at this point.
Well needed. Okay. Okay, we've got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
The next item that I have, counsel, is, um, from the Department of Parks and Recreation, they're seeking council approval to use fifty eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in contingency funds for emergency repairs to the George Murphy and Bay Hundred Community Pools, Martha Sparks, Finance Director, has confirmed that there are sufficient funds available for this request.
Okay.
We know summer is a-coming
It's coming.
and we leave the pools, so, a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, at this point, I would like to invite your Director of Emergency Services, Brian Lucates, to come forward.
Yep.
Uh, Brian has a number of requests for you this evening, all of these requests have been funded and/or are part of grants, and they are, um, they are associated with the, uh, new public safety building, of which we all are very excited to cut a ribbon on, hopefully this June, and so, again, um, the requests that he has have been checked, and they are in order, and he'll answer any questions and add detail, also, we have Tommy Hadaway, your Director of Technical Services, with him, so I'm going to turn it over to you and let you step through, and I'll fill in whatever.
Sounds good, thank you, Mr. Stamp. Good evening, counsel, thank you for having us here this evening, so, as Mr. Stamp alluded, we do have four requests before you this evening, these are all items that we have previously discussed, budgeted for and planned for, so, it's just time now to execute them as we're, uh, progressing down the road of getting the public safety building up and running. So, the first request we have before you is, uh, actually for the technology in the, the training room and our, uh, conference rooms, so this would be, um, all the projectors, microphones, things of that nature, it, uh, will also act as a, um, backup area, if this room were unavailable and you needed to hold a council meeting, we would have all the technology to, uh, run a Granicus meeting with all the cameras and things like that, so that we do have some redundancies in your county government, so, this is a request for a total of five hundred and fifty two thousand dollars, which a hundred and five thousand dollars would be covered by a state homeland security funds, um, and this is, we're requesting to piggyback on the Maryland State Contract and award to E Plus Technologies. We have gone out to, um, bid to just make sure that we are getting the most competitive pricing, and this was one of the, this was the most competitive price, and it is also on state contract.
And again, this is part of the capital improvement, uh, program, and, uh, there is sufficient funds in the budget for this, uh, request.
We're going to do, um, each individual one? Okay. All right.
Motion to approve.
Second. One, one quick question before we vote, uh, I, I, of course, of course, we, uh, have planned for all this technology, it hadn't occurred to me until you brought it up just now that this could be a, a backup location. Occasionally, uh, we've hear from the public that says, don't you, can't you move to a, a, a room with larger capacity? I, I only remember this as an empty shell, it's not much larger than this, if at all.
It would, it would probably be a little bit smaller than this, yeah, so depending on the setup, you, we could probably fit the same amount of, uh, folks from the public, but it would be a good backup location, maybe not a primary location.
Good. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion? Okay, I'm sorry. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, the second request I have before you this evening, and I have in support of this, our, uh, Division Chief of Nine One One, which Holly Gusky is back here with me somewhere, um, so this is a request to extend a contract with Mission Critical Partners, they have been acting as our, uh, consultants on the computer aided dispatcher CAD replacement project, uh, they have been invaluable to us to create the request for proposal that went out to the public and do a technical review of the bids that have been returned to us, uh, in addition to their technical review, we've done a, well, I'll get into that in a minute, so, the, they've done the technical review for us, uh, they were coming to the end of their contract, we'd like to extend their contract through implementation, so they would act as an agent of ours, uh, with a high level of, um, technical, um, expertise in this process, and make sure that we are doing everything that we should be doing, and make sure this is a, um, uh, smooth transition to the new platform, uh, so this would be an award, if approved, it would be an award to Mission Critical Partners in the amount of one hundred and thirty four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, which is budgeted within the CAD project, CAD replacement project, C I P money. So, moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
And our third request was the actual CAD replacement, so this has been a long time coming, we've been working on this project since two thousand and twenty-two, uh, and we're finally here, uh, before you, asking for a total of six hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars to award bid number twenty-four oh seven for a computer aided dispatch replacement to Tyler Technologies, so we went out to bid on this and, um, came back with, um, multiple, multiple proposals, we've done all-day full evaluations with each vendor, where they've shown us some of the, um, pinch points that we have on a daily basis, and some of the things that we wish our current CAD system would us to do better, um, they have worked with us extensively, and they've worked with our Mission Critical Partners, our agent, um, extensively to be able to answer all questions and work the price down to something that was, uh, very, very competitive, so, we're requesting that to be awarded to Tyler.
Okay.
Motion to approve bid twenty-four oh seven.
Second.
Before you take the vote, I just want to, uh, recognize, and for the public's understanding, when they hear the term CAD, computer aided dispatch, they might think, what does that mean? And it's really the heartbeat of what the emergency communicators have at the Nine One One Center, when they answer the telephone and mo, it immediately tells them where somebody's located, it gives them the instructions to relay to the person, it tells where the resources is, it shows the map where resources have to go, and it's just a critical piece of equipment, and, and the upgrade's going to be to a state-of-the-art platform that will integrate well with our neighboring counties, uh, which will allow, or actually enhance response, I just want to recognize, um, Holly Gusky, our Division Chief in Nine One One, she does an excellent job, unsung hero, our dispatchers, twenty-four hours a day, they have their finger on the pulse of our community, so thank you. Twenty-four hours a day, they have their finger on the pulse of our community, so thank you.
Well said, Mr. Stamp. And our fourth and final request this evening is completely grant-funded. It is to-
We didn't do a roll call.
Sorry.
We did a motion in a second.
We have one, right?
Yeah, we, we had a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, for our fourth and final request this evening is a completely grant-funded request through the Emergency Management Performance Grant to contract with a outside agency to conduct a mass casualty drill for us. So, it's been quite some time since we've had one. We wanna, we wanna have a large-scale exercise that involves all of our law enforcement, fire, EMS partners, and has some terrorist nexus to it. And it's really important that we kind of bring somebody in that can do that right after actions and make recommendations to us and be a, a outside partner that would, that would evaluate us. So, that way, we have, you know, we're, we're not squeaking through or anything. We're, we're holding, holding ourselves accountable. So, we're requesting to utilize EMPG funding, grant funding, in the amount of forty-seven-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty dollars, if so approved, award to Essentra. We did go out to bid on this. Essentra was the cheapest, or most least expensive-
There you go.
The least expensive vendor on this, and we're, we would be happy to work with them.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Just wanna thank the team, our DES team here. They work hard. They do a great job, and we're all very proud of them.
I'm sorry, they changed out. I didn't realize it. So, this is Janine Vashaffel. We met her before. She is our Division Chief of Emergency Management. She's worked extensively on this project, so she was up here to support that. So, thank you all for your support.
So, Brian, if I can just say one thing before you leave. Last night, you had a call to my mother-in-law's house, and I just wanna thank you, your staff, everyone that answered to that call last night, EMTs. You do a remarkable job, particularly for our elderly community when they have an emergency. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I will pass that along to those who are involved.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And finally, counsel, I just have an announcement to make. In the back of the room, we have Mr., actually not, Mr., Dr. Fami. Dr. Fami is your new Health Officer. He took over that office on the fifth of March, appointed by the Secretary of Health at the recommendation of the County Council. So, I didn't know if you wanted to say hey to Dr.?
There he is.
We got him, we got him. Okay. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I do not know how many thank you I can say to the council and to the county manager and each and everybody in the department. I will get a source load before I finish. I'm humbled, and I'm, I, I need definitely your leadership and your insight. You are the representative of the county. Your word, your recommendation, your insight is humongous in my book. I will definitely work with you, guided by you, and get support, hopefully support, and all the guidance and all the, whatever I can get. I am so selfish. Whatever I can get from you, I will be appreciative. And it's an honor, and it's a heavily felt appreciation from my, my self-humbleness that each of every one of you have supported me. You also send me email. The chair sent a very nice, appreciated statement on, on, on the behalf of the council. I'm really, I don't think I deserve that, but really appreciated. It meant a lot to me. It's an honor.
Thank you, thank you. Any?
Well, Dr. Fami, thank you so much for being here tonight. Congratulations on your appointment. It was truly a pleasure to serve on that committee with Councilman Step as well. So, thank you, and I look forward to the good work that you will be doing at the Talbot County Health Department.
Appreciate it, Pastor.
Congratulations and welcome aboard. And as Ms. Hay said, we look forward to working with you and keeping Talbot County healthy.
Me more, ma'am. Thank you.
Just a thank you to you for stepping up to what is truly a public service role.
Grateful, sir. Thank you.
I'll echo the congratulations. Great job making it across the finish line and looking forward to working with you.
And thank you for the email. Thank you, sir.
And I'll follow up with what my colleague said, Dr. Fami. We're really glad to have you. In, in your interview with us, I thought you were spectacular.
Highly appreciate it.
I mean, you, you did a really great job. I love your character. I love everything about your, 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 just feel like you're gonna help Talbot County. That's what it's all about. And you're, you're, you're doing a great job, and you've been there.
Appreciate it.
And you've been there. So, the transition isn't gonna be too big, other than now that you're the boss, you know what I mean? So, keep that in mind now.
A big honor, a big honor.
Keep that in mind. All right, we appreciate you. And anything that you need from the council, please come and-
Appreciate it. And I can't leave this, this chair before saying thank you to the manager of the county. It's been, his support meant a lot to me. I'm real appreciative, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And counsel, that completes your county manager report for this week. Thank you.
Okay, good job. Okay, next is gonna be public comment. And what, what we'll do, if you haven't signed up, don't, don't, don't worry about it. We'll go through the list, and then we'll give you an opportunity to come on up. So, don't, don't be worried that you, you won't be able to speak. So, okay, we're gonna start down the list.
And first on that list is Lynette Keef.
So, just to let everybody know, we're gonna give you three minutes for representing yourself, individual, and five minutes for, for an organization, okay?
Perfect.
Yeah?
I feel like I'm two weeks short now. I was outside, couldn't get in last meeting. Unfortunately, you already voted without, I feel like, Mr. Callahan, I wanna thank you for actually looking into history and looking into facts, 'cause I left two weeks ago doing the same. I wanna know why this is a hot topic. So, I did a lot of history and a lot of searching. And I think we all have always wanted in America, Americans to be equal. We want no discrimination by race, color, religion, sex, pregnancy, childbirth, related conditions, transgender status, sexual orientation, or national origin. We also want equal pay for the work that we do, regardless of our sex. We also want people not to be age-discriminated against if they're forty years old or over. Women also should not be discriminated against based on pregnancy, childbirth, and related medical conditions, as well as disabilities. People with disabilities in various areas also should not be discriminated against. Also, the last is the Genetic Information Non-Discriminating Act, which, if you have a genetic disorder, like my daughter, you do not get discriminated against. So, that was a lot. So, then I looked into it a little further, and Obama, in 2011, signed an executive order, one-three-five, one-three-five-eight-three, to government-wide diversity and inclusion in the federal workforce. This act must hire based on race, color, religion, sex, and promote, and with the age, just, so it's exactly the opposite of the Equal Opportunities Employment Act. So, then I thought, that can't be true. This is, this is not how America works. So, then, after that, in 2019, DEI exploded, and it went into a big business. After the Black Lives Matter and the Me Too movements, the estimated cost for DEI, just in the Education Department alone, was one billion dollars. This wasn't even private sector, which is over eight billion dollars. Then the George Floyd incident happened, and 2020, Biden doubled down, signing an executive order of one-three-nine-eight-five, saying that the economic health and climate exposed and exacerbated inequalities. Don't know how that would work, but, so, we had to look into that at the, the cost of the taxpayer. So, then, the same day, he signed another executive order, saying the federal government must recruit, must hire, must develop, must promote, and obtain people of color, race, religion, sex, origin, age, disabilities, et cetera. I don't know where DEI is different, except for, I went on the DEI site, and it says valuing, this is their diversity statement, valuing and prioritizing different backgrounds and identities over qualifications. Unfortunately, it's exactly the opposite of equal opportunity employment.
Thank you.
Next is Bob Toll.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Councilman Step for his motion to allow us to speak before the vote was taken. It was a rather disappointing, uh, vote, but I do appreciate your, your, your motion. I appreciate you, President Callahan, for your very kind and, healing words, I think, after it was all over with. Just so you understand where I stand on diversity, I'm all for diversity. I own a small business here in Talbot County, and I would venture to say that I have probably one of the most diverse staffs of any small business in the county. In fact, one of my employees commented a couple of weeks ago at how diverse the staff actually was. So, diversity, I like. I also happen to go to the, probably one of the most diverse churches in the county, and in fact, if that's not enough, I married a Korean. And my mother-in-law is a, is a immigrant. So, I'm all for diversity. Problem with DEI is that it promises something that it actually doesn't deliver. And a friend sent this to me recently. This was a poster that was apparently displayed at the Talbot County Board of Ed, and I know you're kind of, they're kind of autonomous from the council, but it certainly is a county entity. And the poster says, it's titled Six Conditions. And the first one is Focus on Personal, Local, and Immediate. I'm not quite sure what that means. Does that mean just focus on Talbot County issues? Don't know. Second one is Isolate Race. I don't know what that means really either, except that possibly, when you're dealing with someone, consider the race of that person. My, and my understanding too is this was presented probably for the staff of the Talbot County Board of Ed. Third one is Normalize Social Construction and Multiple Perspectives. I, I don't know what that is either. I'm sorry. I guess that may, I don't know what it means. There's not, I don't define it. The fourth one is Monitor Agreements, Conditions, and Establish Parameters. Does that mean have boundaries? I don't know. The fifth one is Use a Working Definition for Race. I think we all know what races are, but use a working definition for race. And the last one, which is frankly, I think the most insidious of them all, is examine the presence and role of whiteness. My understanding is the poster was taken down, and my guess is it's not because the people of the Board of Ed disagree with any of it. It's because they didn't want people to see it. And so, my take is this is what you get with DEI, is this kind of thing. And if you don't think that this does not trickle down from the administration into the classroom, then you're naive. I think that this is a, a bad road to go on, especially for our students. And again, I think it was probably taken down because they didn't want anybody to see it. But I do thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next is Terrence Bernard.
Good evening, Terrence Bernard, Easton, Maryland. I also was at the last meeting. I waited an hour and a half to get up to the point of where you all took a vote, and then someone called a pause on it, and I wasn't gonna wait another hour and a half to continue, so here's my comment. I oppose keeping DEI within Talbot County and employee handbook. President Donald J. Trump, on day one, began the changes the public wants. President Trump, on day one, began the changes he was elected on by winning the public vote and winning the electoral vote. President Trump is holding back federal money for those that are resistant and not initially complying. President Trump ended DEI. He also brought back one man, one woman. Since the beginning of time, it has been hope. Do I get credited this time here for this interruption, please?
Could, could you please?
Or take her outside? Trump, President Trump ended DEI. He also brought back one woman, one man. Since the beginning of time, it has been one man, one woman, one male, one female, XX or XY chromosome. President Trump directives and changes occur daily, weekly. There are many in the pipeline. I suggest to take heed of the actions coming. End DEI in Talbot County, Talbot County Government, the employee handbook, training manuals, tests, videos, acronyms, et cetera. Get a pair of scissors, cut out and remove all the DEI words, acronyms, directives, then reread it. Do we retain DEI in employee handbook? Could it be that by retaining it, you meet the requirements for more grant money to Talbot County? Do not retain DEI in Talbot County. The four years of President Biden directives has ended. Feelings used are stopped. President Trump ended it. He is doing what the majority of the United States' first people elected him to do. The government efficiency, or DOGE, announced Monday, February tenth, dozens of grants related to diversity, equity, and inclusion were scrapped by the U.S. Department of Education. DOGE wrote the twenty-nine DEI training grants totaling one-hundred-and-one-million altogether. One grant was designed to teach teachers how to help students understand, integrate the complex histories involved in oppression, and help students recognize areas of privilege and power on an individual and collective basis. There is now a U.S. Department of Education launched NDEI dot ed dot gov site for anyone that needs to comment about DEI in education. President Donald J. Trump protects civil rights and merits-based opportunities by ending illegal DEI. Directs all departments and agencies to take strong action to end private-sector DEI discriminations, including civil, restoring the values of an individual.
Hey, Terrence, that's, that's it. Okay, thank you.
Next is Mary Russell.
Thank you, council members. I'm your Eileen Russell of Claiborne. I'm really sorry that I was not here last time. I was a small child in Gathersburg, Maryland, during the Civil Rights Movement of the nineteen-sixties. My father, an Irish Catholic husband and father of a young family, joined the NAACP to offer his support to the African-Americans in our community. He took part in boycotts. I recall that he took us past a barber shop in Gathersburg that was whites-only, and he told us that he and several other people were not going there because the owner was unjust. So, with my family, to be racist was the lowest thing you could be. The only worst thing was to be a liar. Yet, throughout my life, I have continued to see race used as a means of determining who gets what job and who gets what scholarship, et cetera, because of the so-called affirmative action policies. This is unjust and against the principles of the Civil Rights Act. I hope someday the council chooses to repeal the DEI resolutions of 2020, as they are redundant in the light of what is already spelled out in our county charter and in the U.S. Constitution. In fact, the DEI agenda has, rather than enhancing the liberties which we already enjoy, caused many citizens to be marginalized and alienated due to the woke connotations associated with it. And that's why Trump won. Our county has been known for decades for being a welcoming place to all, and most especially to families. Let us hire people based on their ability to do the job, not upon qualities that have nothing to do with the job in question. Let every employee have the satisfaction of knowing that they were hired for their gifts and for their character, not for their skin color or their gender, et cetera, but for the content of their character. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Sheri Will Coxon. Sheri Will Coxon?
Good evening, everybody. I wrote my comments before. I knew that we weren't gonna be able to speak before. So, I'll amend them some. I did send them to everyone. I don't understand why there's even any, any doubt of unity on that resolution that Dave Step so bravely put forward and Chuck supported. Thank you so much. Merit should be the one and only reason why someone gets hired. It should not have anything to do with anything else, just merit. Anyone on this council who is willing to risk federal funding and a potential lawsuit that could cost millions really doesn't deserve to be representing the people of Talbot County. We're talking about somewhere around forty-seven million dollars for the hospital, plus, my understanding, an additional potential seven million dollars for the schools, for the sheriff's office, for the hospital, well, I said, I meant the airport expansion, and I apologize, and then the hospital. I had some quotes that I sent to everyone, but I'm gonna skip over those for a second and read this, because after hearing Mrs. Hay's response to Dave Step, I have to say, I was absolutely stunned. It sounded to me like she was in essence calling Mr. Step a liar, as well as our great Sheriff, Joe Gamble. I've known both these men for several years and worked with them in different capacities. In my every experience with both of them, they have the utmost integrity and high moral character, and I am personally highly offended by these outrageous statements about these two men of great faith and who have given great service to our county. I thank them both, both. Based upon her statement, I can only assume that she really doesn't understand. The grant she referred to, the sheriff's grant, or any federal funds, like the airport, they don't have to be about DEI. We, as a county, cannot have DEI policies to receive the funds. It's different. Where is the legal opinion from our county attorney? I actually would love to see it. I didn't hear anything about it, but I need to understand if our attorney failed us, because to me, he should advise everyone what you're risking. Pete and Lynn make legalese statements, but they are not licensed attorneys. I take President Trump as, at his word. He's already shown us promises made, promises kept. If we do indeed lose, lose these funds that you have now put in jeopardy, it is on the three of you, Pete Lesher, Lynn Milkie, and Keisha Hayth, who rolled the dice for all Talbot County citizens. Again, thank you, Dave Step and Chuck Callahan, for looking for all, looking for, out for all- Again, thank you, Dave Stepp and Chuck Callahan, for looking for all, looking out for all of us in Talbot County. Thank you.
Next is Brendan Kelly.
I am diversity, I am equity, and I'm very well of who I am. In the eye of the world.
Hey, Sherri.
Yeah, absolutely. But we don't hire based on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We hire based on qualifications and merit.
That's enough, all of you. That's enough.
So since you want other people to be put out, why don't we ask the team here to put you out, Sherri?
Sherri. Hey, Officer, take her out of here. Yep, take her out.
I'm going to tell you this one more time. I'm going to tell you one more time. You've been a problem all night, okay? And I've asked you, I've asked you several times to be quiet, okay? I'm not threatening you at all.
Absolutely, Judge. She's absolutely correct. She is correct.
Hey, this- Hey, Officer, come here. Now, yeah, she's done. This lady, this lady here, I'm sorry, but you started this. And Sherri, would you mind leaving too, please? Yes. Okay, let's start again. Let's start again. And I'm telling you, I do not want an outburst, okay? This council right here, it's not fair to pick on Dave, or Keisha, or me, or any of these, okay? We're here to respect you guys and listen to you guys. That's what public comment is. Don't be calling us out. Do what?
A civil discourse.
Right. So let's respect this council, okay? Thank you. Mr. Kelly.
Good evening, councilmen. I am Brendan Kelly, a lifelong resident of Talbot County and a recent graduate of Easton High School. I am also a minority. You might not be able to tell by looking at me, but I am of American Indian heritage. So technically, D E I gives me preference all of, over all of you that don't have such heritage. How is it fair to give me this privilege over you, based on who had sex with my ancestors? How is it fair? It's not. Why not just treat everybody equally, like the Constitution says, like the Civil Rights of 1964 says? We should, we, why should we think that people, that us, aren't smart enough, aren't skilled enough to do the same job that white people can do? That's insulting. That's embarrassing. So to say people like me that it's easy to get hired in Talbot County with D E I is so, is to discriminate against people that don't have the same heritage as me. I don't want you to hire me because the color of my skin or because of my heritage. You should hire me because I'm the best for the job. And if there's somebody that's totally white, who is more skilled or harder working, they should get the job because they could probably do a better job. And they, they should get the job over us minorities. We don't need you to cheat other people out of their own hard-earned money because you think that we can't do it on our own. Please do not insult us anymore. Please do not embarrass us anymore. Just treat everybody equally. Treat everybody fairly. Get rid of this D E I, which is institutional racism. You guys, you guys should be against institutional racism. And my one question for you, councilmen, is you just cheated us out of millions of dollars. How do you, how did you serve your people today doing that? That is all.
Okay, thank you. Next is James Kelly.
Good afternoon. Stressful day for you guys, it looks like. It is good to have a peaceful discourse. I've been here for about 34 years. We're all grownups, right? We had a person read a wonderful discussion about what really D E I means. And you have a statement that's very vague, but you either treat people the same or you don't, right? You either treat everybody equally or you don't. Or you make some people more equal than others, right? So basically, the way that it looks is that this is broken down into two views. One view is, take care of me. We need you guys to give us special attention, make special rules, make special privileges because we want you guys who are in power to give us something that other people don't have. The other group is, treat everybody the same. Don't make qualifications. Don't make judgments based upon these characteristics. One group wants preference for a certain amount or a certain number of people. The other group wants nothing. Those of us here today don't want you guys to give us anything. I'm not going to gain any benefit with D E I. What we sound like we lose is millions and millions of dollars to everybody equally. So you're equally cheating us of millions of dollars. One argument is, we want people to be comfortable. Well, with 50 or 60 million dollars, I think we could find a better way to make people just feel comfortable. Because either you're just making a statement of comfort, which then has no effect, in which case there is just an imaginary sense of doing something. Or you're actually doing something and giving people preference, which is what D E I is every place else in the world. And then maybe you imagine that in Talbot, we have a different definition of D E I that everybody else does. And I'm struck by the irony or the hypocrisy. Diversity. You voted before you were interested in our diversity of opinion. You voted before you included our opinion. You didn't practice equity. You didn't treat us equally as you did for other people that testified last time. And you didn't let us know that you were going to vote. Were you afraid of what we were going to say? Why didn't you just listen to us first? My time's up?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
Next is Christopher Anderson.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. My name is Christopher Anderson. I'm the chairman of the Maryland Black Republican Council. I'd like to thank Councilman Stepp for introducing this bill to at least consider this ruling to be repealed. I respect the council's decision to make that decision. Like he said, it's your decision. But I think it's a wrong step in the wrong direction because you look pretty diverse up there already to me. And I'm thinking that most people on the council well deserve their, their position on merit. So I render this testimony. I want to say, these times are tough right now, and these issues is no exception. And a lot has happened in the last few months surrounding African American people. These D E I programs are supposed to be to enrich us first, you know, from the George Floyd thing. We might think that getting rid of D E I statement is a negative thing, but it's, I do not. We have been in the forefront of making this county great for a very, very long time. Council members like Keisha Hayes, is it okay to mention her name?
As long as it's good.
Yeah, okay. Councilwoman Keisha Hayes is a prime example of this. The Monumental Civil Rights Act of 1964, which is not under attack, is the blueprint for change in America. And Talbot County and others, Talbot County and others are tethering their cause to our plight in America. These D E I initiatives are not helping us as a people, black people, and that other groups have tethered themselves to D E I, to our plight, to pass initiatives for other minority groups. I'm personally tired of us being, being used this way as an African American. I do not, I do not think you should be afraid to get rid of D E I in any way, any initiatives in any way. And I don't think we should let the media fight our causes for us. Here are a few facts about D E I that I'm hoping a lot of people are going to learn today. The top recipients for D E I initiatives are, get this, white women. The very top person that gets the benefits of D E I. Next and second is Latinos and immigrants. Third is white men. Fourth are veterans. Fifth is disabled. Sixth is the LGBTQ community, which I see a lot of in this room today. And African Americans are very last, and they're number seven, which I do not see a lot of us in here today. Why then should I be afraid if D E I programs are taken away? I'm not benefiting, my demographic is not benefit from it, and when we do benefit from it, when we do benefit from it, we benefit very, very last. I think that should be taken into consideration when you go forward with these D E I initiatives. When I think of D E I, I think of the California fires that burnt down the city. That's supposed to child D E I for me. There was no water in the hydrants, no trained employees. I get five minutes? Organization, five minutes?
Are you, yep, you're representing.
Yes.
You have five. You have, keep going, keep going.
All right, thank you.
Yep, yep.
They were both white lesbian women that D E I picture, uh, the face was on. There was no water in the hydrants, no trained employees, and many of the blame went to Karen Bass, the mayor at the time, and labeled her, they had labeled her a D E I hire. Well, there was a fire chief in the second command that were the D E I hires. They both were white lesbian women, not the black mayor. Mayor Bass was out of town when it happened, but there were, they were there. And it seems that they were more concerned with D E I and D E I policies in the gay community than putting out fires. That travesty, to me, that would happen in California is supposed to child of what happens when we dive into D E I for the wrong reasons, put the wrong demographic up. I would love for, if African American men was, I guarantee you, they would have put those fires out right away if they had those jobs. They would have went out and did the job without Ms. Bass being there. But we had other people there that couldn't, could not do it, and those other people are put in front of us. Now, with that said, I say the issues of this county is that we are still resilient people, and we need to be resilient now without D E I. Like Councilwoman Hayes, she's a prime example. This stuff is being used to uplift other people, and we don't need to continue to use, to be used like that or keep fighting for causes that are not our cause. Dr. Claude Anderson at the Harvard Institute says that we are a unique people. We don't need D E I to fight for it or to be a great people. Talbot County has been diverse already without D E I. The number one thing we need to do is stop being used for others' causes and lift others up and with other initiatives, like the, with other initiatives. Like our scholars have told us, like our churches have told us, and like how God has told us. We can be great on our own, and we do not need D E I. This county doesn't need D E I statement or training to lift others up in front of us in our cause in Talbot County. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Derek Neus.
Good evening, Talbot County Council. Thank you for hosting us tonight. My name is Derek Neus, and I'm speaking tonight out of concern for the county government's statement on diversity, equity, and inclusion. For too long, we have focused so much on our diversity that we have forgotten the ways in which we are really just the same as Americans. A country that's bitterly torn apart by divisive identity politics and an entire generation raised without a passion or purpose, the United States is sinking into oblivion. We have lost our connection with the ideals of our founding documents, which established the rule of law as precedent within our legal system. This law stems from natural law, which is the moral imperative of humanity to replicate the will of God. Equal treatment of all individuals is the only way to maintain this republic, if we can keep it. Even the diversity statement recognizes that equity is not the same as equality, which means that our representatives are prioritizing immutable characteristics over meritocracy, victimhood over excellence, and power over truth. After the past four years of a tumultuous presidency under Biden and Harris, D E I has exposed itself as a power grab based on group struggle. We hear all of this talk about administrators, government officials, CEOs, and teaching staff, but we never hear about the police officers, firefighters, veterans, and tradesmen who are the backbone of this country. For those of you who support D E I, my question to you is, why the obsession with power dynamics? Our government is built on the decentralization of power, starting with the Magna Carta in 1215, to the English Bill of Rights of 1688, to the Declaration of Independence that gave birth our nation. Our legal system is based on the premise that our government is limited, that we are all accountable to God and to ourselves. D E I is against the founding ideals of the Enlightenment that gave birth to a new nation destined to become unlike anything ever created. Equity is based upon the principle of forcibly taking from someone based on ability and redistributing it to someone based on need. But what is need? Who gets to decide what need is? How do you quantify need? You cannot maintain a multiracial republic unless people of every color have exactly the same rights and responsibilities under the law and are considered of the exact same moral value under God. You have to have that. All lives have to matter or else it cannot work. The individual is the smallest minority in the world, but yet we come together despite our individual differences because our strength is in our unity. E pluribus unum, out of many, one. Before we decide to take the road to Yugoslavia, Zimbabwe, Austria-Hungary, South Africa, and Rwanda, we should take every precaution necessary to reject collectivism at all costs. Success is unifying because that's what it means to be an American. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lauren Feerman.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yep.
You may not recognize me. This is my first council meeting. My name is Lauren Feerman, and I'm here representing Delmarva Pride Center. By trade, I'm a biologist. I'm no political scientist. But even I know that executive orders are not law. Surely, folks in this room would know that. You know, if they, if they were law, right, then we would be having discussions about removing paper straws from Talbot County, right? Because, you know, I have right here Executive Order 14208 as of February 14th, ending procurement and forced use of paper straws. So I think if we're going to determine what Talbot County does based on executive orders, maybe we should start including all of those executive orders because it's not very fair, it's not very equitable to pick and choose which executive orders we follow and which we don't. Speaking of which, executive orders are also subject to judicial review, which we have already seen the president's executive orders be rejected by the Supreme Court. His executive order that stripped funding from U.S. aid and the executive order to attempt to get rid of birthright citizenship have been struck down by the courts. So does Talbot County want to get on the bandwagon, get on the anti-D E I bandwagon before we even hear that this executive action, this executive action is lawful? Because news flash, a lot of law professionals are going to say it's not legal, and it's only a matter of time before the Supreme Court turns that over. And then where does that leave Talbot County? I also want to state regarding the funding that may or may not be cut, the state of Maryland's government has already determined that they will not be rolling back D E I policies. So Talbot County is going to be getting their funding mostly from the state. So if obviously the state isn't going to get funding, why are we having this conversation here? I think everyone that has concerns about whether or not we're going to get funding cut, those concerns should be taken to the state level because those are the folks- because those are the folks holding the checkbook. Oh, and I also want to press upon the council and anyone listening, if our standards for protection of equal rights, if we're going to depend on an executive order from 1941 in 2025, I think that's very concerning. That we don't wanna maybe think about what has changed since 1941, since EEO has passed. And maybe, maybe if you listen to the marginalized folks that are actually affected by this, maybe you might learn something about what improvements to EEO can be made. And the last thing I want to end on is, per study by the American University, white men make up 43% of the workforce and make up 95% of senior management positions. So I don't think this worry that, you know, marginalized folks are coming for the jobs, it's a fallacy, it's a farce, and it's scare tactics that have been used for ages and ages. D E I is not a new emerging policy that, you know, is woke. You know, these are things that have been in place for a very long time to create a level playing field for folks. And I really thank the council for maintaining their D E I statement and policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a little hard to read, possibly Guy Kelly.
Craig Kelly?
Yep, it could be that.
I should have been a doctor. Hello, council members. My name is Craig Kelly, and I was here to ask you to support the repeal of the D E I resolutions. Although it may appear to promote social justice, it's been shown that D E I programs really foster more racism and animosity. And we have come to see that D E I really means division, exclusion, and indoctrination, as they have become nothing more than force-feeding of political ideologies and special agendas. While it's one thing to have a vision statement, it's totally different thing to institute forced training classes that teach a narrow and particular point of view. Does Talbot County require a written acknowledgement from employees for any other statement or issue? As a federal employee, I remember how infuriating it was to be forced to take these indoctrination classes that were blatantly racist and insulting. And we had no right to opt out of, and that our wonderful coworkers had no need for. If you really want to train people to be better employees, we should be teaching them love of country and of each other. We should be propagating the principles of equality set forth in our Declaration of Independence, that all men are created equal. It is our commonalities, not our differences, that make us a united people. So I was hoping that you would have taken this opportunity to stand up for the true equality of all county citizens and repeal these divisive training programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Anita Springer. Anita Springer?
That's actually for Tim Springer.
And Tim Springer is next on the list, okay?
A little visual.
Visual aid. Diversity, equity, and inclusion. I actually had to look up what equity means because, you know, what seems to me is there's been this huge kind of melange of philosophies and ideas and stuff that have kind of gotten lumped around this terminology. It's almost like Calvinist. You know, it's like a term that stands for a whole bunch of stuff.
Hey, sir, can you lean towards us and talk to us?
I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. And also, what is your name?
I'm Tim Springer.
Okay, and you're from here?
Yes, I live here in Easton.
Okay.
So they're three words, and a lot of philosophies have been espoused and talked about. But as I said, I had to look up what equity meant. I didn't even know what it meant, really. Actually, it means justice. It has nothing to do with equality, justice, or fairness. Just so people that have been worrying about this from an equality point of view, that's not what it's talking about if you just follow the definition of the words. So, and I said, well, to myself, I thought, what's the opposite of diversity, equity, and inclusion? And the best I could come up with are uniformity. That's the opposite of diversity. Injustice is the opposite of equity. Exclusion is the opposite of inclusion. So I'm like, well, okay, you can't be kind of pregnant. You're either, you either are or you aren't, you know. You're for equity, or you're okay with injustice. You can't be in the middle of that. So putting aside all of the things that people associate with this, well, let's just say, let's cut back to the basic principles. Everybody that I've heard talk tonight, on either side, on either side of this, has talked about injustice and exclusion. Some people think that the policies that have been put in place lead to injustice and exclusion for some group. Everybody agrees with it. So I don't think that anybody is actually for this side. The only one that seems to be really in question, maybe, is diversity. And, okay, I can see uniformity. Somebody had pointed out that there needs to be a general feeling of being one people. I agree with that because at the beginning of this meeting, we turned around and talked to the flag, made a pledge of allegiance, and the last three words are what? Justice for all.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Walsh.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Sarah Walsh. I'm from Tillman Island, Maryland. So when we hear about things like diversity, equity, and inclusion, no pun intended, but it gets painted as a very black and white issue. It's this, or it's that. But there's a lot more to it when we go and examine underneath the surface. So something a lot of people have been pointing out that I wanted to comment on is that equity and equality are not the same thing, which is true. Equality is treating everybody exactly the same. While under equity, we give people what they need, regardless of whether or not it's the same. So this comes into play for a lot of people who are disabled, chronically ill, mentally ill, neurodivergent, and are trying to make a place for themselves and work in school or in their careers like everybody else, but they may need different accommodations. So example, growing up, I had a childhood friend who had extremely severe epilepsy and would miss a lot of school because of the seizures she had. And there were no accommodations for her at the time. And even as an adult, she still struggles to find workplaces that can accommodate for her and her epilepsy. So yes, it's true, it's not the same treatment to say, maybe allow her to work remotely on days when the seizures get particularly bad. But it's giving her what she needs to give her the same chance everybody else has. So when I'm talking about this difference, I think it's important to remember that when we give everybody the tools they need, that's how we do get to equality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Heather Griffiths. Heather Griffiths, oh.
My name's Heather Griffiths. And I have a few words to share with y'all today. I'm close enough, very intrusive. All right. Not understanding D E I is a direct result of white privilege. Paired with a lack of moral character, your safe space is defined. You continuously attempt to invalidate the D E I program by saying that almost no one's affected, so why should we matter? Why should it matter? I don't care if it only affects two people. You're attempting to minimize its impact because its impact on you is small. Because it seems that where we are right now is that Trumpers only care about things that affect them directly. This is a story of white privilege, something that many of us know something about and don't like to acknowledge. I'm gonna tell a story from my own past because it's the only truth, it's the only story with truth that I can tell. This will not be a traditional story of D E I. My family was raised in rural Texas with racism built into our lives. Maybe along the way, they recognized it for what it was, and they chose to stay the course without growth. But it was ingrained in me and supported by them. And so it took me longer than I would have liked to see it in myself. But today, my branch of my family tree stretches proudly for the first time to the right side of history. Despite being from the same state as the president's Bush, if you had asked my father if he supported diversity, equity, and inclusion programs when I was a child, he would say yes. Because it was the Clinton era, and our family was surviving on government handouts, still surviving on those same government handouts. Fox News was already doing its work on him, along with Rush Limbaugh. By 2016, he would fully rebuke those programs that saved his family so many times over in support of a presidential candidate. After having his life saved by cancer research funded by our government, saved by community and community outreach programs that kept clothes on my back and food on my table, and saved by the government in the form of handouts of financial assistance with his medical bills from cancer and stroke treatment, even after three of his six children entered into biracial marriages and produced grandchildren that he dotes on, right? He didn't change his mind. No one likes to be told that they're ignorant, but my dad is. I say all of this to say, please do not be ignorant like those throughout history who chose to question their beliefs, not question their beliefs, and remain standing on the wrong side. Their entire family line can look back at them and see the shadow that they cast. Please don't cast a shadow on your own family. When making your decision, don't ask if this is about D E I. That acronym makes it easy to forget what the words are and what they mean. Ask yourself if you're against diversity. Ask yourself if you're against equity. Ask yourself if you're against inclusion. If the answer to those things are no, make sure nothing changes.
That's it.
If the answer is yes, and you are against these things grabbing our society, please make sure that your constituents know that openly and honestly. They deserve to know who is representing them. Thank you for your extra time.
Thank you. Next. Next on the list is Sammy Mooney. Waterfowl, she was here to speak on Waterfowl Festival. It may be that she already spoke, Sammy Mooney. If not, we move on to James Altman.
First amendment, yay.
If not James Altman, then Jamie Pot.
Hello, and thank you for the way you voted today. I didn't have anything prepared. This is just completely from the heart. But I want to remind the members of our community that have spoken against D E I today that maybe before a certain person became a nominee or a candidate or a president, that you didn't have issues with D E I. And that inclusion and equity and diversity are important to a community, that they make a community wonderful and they make it great. To celebrate that is nothing bad, it's nothing evil. To stand against that, I want you to really, truly ask yourself why. This country has been divided for a very long time, but it has been made worse over the past, what has it been? 10 years, 12 years? And I only, there is one common denominator for that, and I think we all know who that is. Diversity should continue to be celebrated. Starting this off, let me start that part over again. Things will continue to happen throughout the next four years that are going to be brought up about the same issue. If we do not stand up now for what we truly believe in and support the community members that are represented by this, then we will fail our community. People need to be uplifted and supported, all of us do. We do not need to be divided. And by contributing to this divisive behavior and this divisive talk by the leader of our country, we are doing everything we said as a nation we would not do. I have more to say, I'm getting nervous. We are a beautiful people, but we need to continue to celebrate that. And by letting this kind of speech divide us further, it only hurts us. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Next is Phil Rigan.
I'm Phil Rigan, 29736 Sullivan Drive in Easton. You've heard that before. Been a long meeting, and I, as I was sitting there in the last half an hour or so, thinking about what I had intended to say here tonight, I came to the conclusion almost that it wasn't very important when compared to what was being otherwise discussed here. But then I realized that it was important because it goes to the fundamental element of what all this is about. I would love to see people who have been engaged tonight on opposite sides of the fence spend some time, maybe three or four months together, working on a Habitat for Humanity project. And then see how much difference of opinion and difference of attitude begins to sort of melt away and it all falls, becomes secondary to the objective that you're collectively doing. I would also like, and a lot of people here tonight are here for a particular reason, one reason only. It's a shame they're not here on a regular basis to see what you folks do on a regular basis. Because that's very important. You're not here to legislate something on D E I, and that's all you do. You do a lot more than that. And I do think it's, would be worth people's time periodically to just stop by here and do nothing more than say, watch you congratulate nonprofit organizations for all the good stuff they're doing on behalf of the people of Talbot County. And how many of you have personally also done some of those same things on behalf of the people of Talbot County? Perhaps some of the people in this audience would be well-served to be spending their time on behalf, providing service to the people of Talbot County. Anyhow, I came here to talk about veterans and got sidetracked. And I'll be quick, because I see them down to 32 seconds already. An upcoming event on the 30th of March will be the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War. And the VFW has been primarily involved, and they were here earlier tonight. Thank you for inviting them, I really appreciate it. As a former lieutenant in the US Infantry Army, I'm already out of time. I am a life member of the VFW. I want to thank you. I want to thank you deeply for what you're doing, and I have some other remarks I wanted to make on behalf of veterans, but I have run out of time, being sidetracked. Thank you again for...
No problem. No problem. You're welcome. Come back next meeting.
We'll see you next meeting.
Next meeting, you can finish it up. Next meeting, you can finish it up.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan, that's the last member on the list. Signed up in advance, so you can open it up for those who have not signed up in advance.
Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Uh-oh, Dave, we got the neighbor.
Hi, Ms. Cindy.
Shall I repeat that councilmember step as my very fine next-door neighbor? Thank you. My name is Cindy Orban. I'm a lifelong Talbot County resident. I was privileged to speak at the last meeting, so this is going to be brief. I have listened to everyone. I have listened carefully, thoughtfully. And my conclusion is that there is a lot of misinformation, misunderstanding, incomplete understanding. And Councilmember Hayes, I'm not, I know that it was sort of in the heat of the moment, but you mentioned training, learning, gaining that understanding. We don't all have to agree completely, but I think we all need to start at the same place with a full understanding of exactly what D E I means. Because what I have heard from many, many speakers is simply not, and I won't even say what I think it is, it just simply is not what it is. So I do thank you, I thank you all for the courage to vote on a very charged issue, and I certainly thank you for failing to repeal the diversity, equity, and inclusion pieces in our employee handbook. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. Yes.
Hello, my name is Ian Lopez, lifelong resident of Easton. I wish to further expound on the differences between equity and equality, as have been mentioned previously. Equity and equality are two very different things. Equality is treating everyone the same. Equity, on their hand, is counting for an individual's ability to reach the same outcomes as anyone else. As a demonstration, let's say that me and my mother here, our job is to touch our heads. And a workplace quality would look like this. Workplace equity would look like this. And I also wish to address those worried about any potential financial implications of the D E I policy. Anyone willing to sell out the rights of others on even the possibility of financial hardship is fundamentally opposed to American ideals. Fix your hearts. Thank you.
Okay, ma'am, you want to come on up?
Hello, everybody. My name is Brandy Whiting. I'm from Easton, Maryland. I'm a resident homeowner here for five years, but all over Maryland for a long time, just moving to different areas, different places, and doing different jobs. What I'm hearing a lot here is people's interpretation of EEO and D E I, and I'm going to take a guess that most of you don't do hiring. As somebody who has, and has done hiring at many different places for the last fifteen years, I have seen exactly why these policies are in place. EEO is there, yes, it is. But that is to protect, though, honestly, the way it's been used at companies I've worked for is just don't speak about it. We're not going to say why we didn't hire them, because if you say it, then you get in trouble. But as long as we don't say it. Whereas D E I is active. It says, we are bringing information to you to address your underlying biases on why we're not hiring those people. Why, I saw somebody's name who looked a little different and decided, eh, I'm not going to look any further. Why, I saw somebody with autism and said, hmm, that's probably not going to be easy for me to deal with. This is things that we need to think about. These are the things and the reasons why D E I is there. EEO was a great foundation. D E I expands on that. I really want to thank you all for voting to keep it, and hopefully, we will continue to expand it and continue to have inclusivity, diversity, equity, justice, all of the words we want to throw around, but really, it's here for a reason. Like, I don't understand why we're so mad about this. But, you know, I get the financial aspect. Hey, you know, I'm in accounting, I understand, money is money, right? And if you want to sell your morals for money, you go right ahead. But I'm glad that at least three of our councilpeople did not. So, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, somebody want to come on up? Next person? Next person? Anybody else want to come up? Deputy, could you ask anybody out there that might be waiting that don't know? Nobody outside? I've cleared everything. Okay, okay, that sounds good. Okay. Council comments. I'm going to start with Pete.
I will start simply by thanking everybody who came out on both sides of this question this evening. I don't think any minds got changed, but I appreciate the public engagement, and thank you all for being here. All of those who wrote in advance, called in advance, spoke to me in person elsewhere, your engagement on this and other matters with the county. I truly appreciate the public engagement. Thank you.
Lynn.
We have a nice way of closing. Thank you. You summed it up brilliantly.
One thing that Chuck has taught me, well, let me back up. What Pete said. Certainly, we thank each and every individual that came out tonight, because we did want to hear your comments through public comments, as we do every meeting. But one thing that Chuck has taught me while being on this council is that, once we take a vote, we're done, and we move on. That's it. And we still all continue to be friends, because I do, really do believe that each and every councilmember that I serve with, we are friends, and I appreciate each and every one of them. So with that, we took the vote, and we're going to move on and continue to operate as a council of friends. So thank you all this evening.
Thank you, Keisha.
I'll add the same. Right, it's been wonderful to hear everyone's perspectives on this. I still do wish it was beforehand, just so everyone could have had their say prior to a vote. But I thank those who did stay around to make sure that, you know, that those comments, you were able to get them out and have them heard by all of us. So appreciate everyone for being here again tonight. I love Mr. Rigan's comment. I wish it were just not on nights where they were on events where, you know, where it might be over a topic that you're concerned about, right? But just to see all that this council does, inside and out of council, we all, I believe, collectively do a lot of great things for this community, and that's what we all want to see continue. We want to see this be, continue to be a great place to live, and that's it. Thank you.
Yep. So, first of all, with my colleagues, Keisha's right, Dave's right, Lynn's right, and Pete's right. We're a phenomenal council, okay? And I really, really appreciate you guys giving us honest feedback. That's what this public comment's all about. It really is. And, you know, this is tough, it's stressful on everybody. Next time our salaries are on the ballot, could you up us a little bit, please? That would be great, okay? But, you know, it's stressful on staff, too. And I want to thank you guys for sitting around, supporting us, because you don't support law, you don't support resolutions, you don't, you support us in whatever needs we are. And Patrick, I really appreciate what you've done. I know it's tough, but, you know, giving us guidance and stuff throughout all this stuff that you do day in and day out for us and working for us, I really, really appreciate it. And the deputies, unfortunately, you know, when you're in my position, sometimes you have to make a quick decision, and, you know, it's not a great decision all the time, and, but, you know, I do really, really work on respect. And I give everybody an opportunity to do whatever they need to do to be in front of us, invent. And I've done this for a long time, and I like doing it. I like giving people the opportunities. And the officers, I really appreciate you helping us and keeping us safe. Not that we feel like we're not safe, but at a lot of times, it's great to have people just come up and talk to us, and it means a lot. It means a lot to this council. It really does. So for that, like I said, Mr. Stamp, you have to lead the troops, and you've got to take care of us. And I know it's been tough on you in the last couple weeks. And council, we've all discussed this many, many times throughout the last month. And Dave, I really appreciate you put your, you know, put your thoughts together, and it takes a lot of bravery to do that. It really, really does. And Keisha, the same way with you, okay? But at the end of the day, it's over, we've made the decision, and we all move on, okay? So thanks a lot, and Pete, could you help us out?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 25th, beginning at 5:00 PM. The council will be convening an open session at 2:00 PM for a fiscal year 26 budget work session, and then adjourning into closed session, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. On Thursday, March 13th, at 4:30 PM, the council will be meeting for a fiscal year 26 budget presentation by the Talbot County Public Schools, followed by a budget work session. The meeting will be held here in the Bradley Meeting Room and is open to the public. Therefore, if there are motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene, as noted.
Okay, we've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Glescher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thanks a lot for coming, appreciate it.